Mayor Nicholson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Durst.
Here.
Espinoza. Martinez.
Here.
Smith. Wells.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. We will start out with the public hearing, the zoning map amendments. Is there anybody here that wants to speak on that? Okay, please come up and state your name, please. I'm not sure we know who you are.
I'm Richard Wilson, and I'm here as a private citizen. I think it's the first one in your zoning one, I'm not sure, it's out on the west end of town. My property lies south of the city limits, and I need protection from the city. You know, because the city has got protection in the county where I can't put a hog farm into, you know, next to you guys, and stuff like that. But the city gives me no protection. The zoning on it right now is for residential. And with that, there is more restrictions that you place upon that landowner. Though it's been purchased, and since it's been purchased, a lot of things have gone on out there. I'll give you a short history of the last, say, ten years out there. I've had the city out there numerous times, because it used to be a salvage yard in, on that property. Horrible Cluver had it. And he came in and I made him go back into the city's limits with that. I put up a barrier of trees to hide his salvage yard from the interstate, to make the city look better. Well, they started crushing cars, and they're just taking a pick and puncturing the tanks and the transmissions and everything else, letting the fluids leak. And all that drains towards my property. And I called the city, they stopped the contractor, put up a barrier. It was supposed to be cleaned up, because I raise dogs out there, you know, German shepherds, and we show these dogs. So I want to be able to have these dogs free running my property with the transmission fluid and stuff like that, coming on my property is a hazard. I can't enjoy my property. I've had the city manager out there, and I've had the chief police come out there, and they've cited people, but it lasts six months. Now, we go out there and they've changed owners. And he's trying to get, develop out there. They want to tear down the purple sage, which is a benefit to the city. But, they're hauling dirt in, they're hauling junk in. I've called the code enforcer, and the code enforcers not been able to do anything with the violations that I got. I've got a few pictures here, I'll pass them around, so you can see what's been moved in on my property, or next to my property, how close it is to my property. This last one just shows where they haul in dirt, and it came close. If we hadn't stopped them, they'd come over onto my property. What I'm concerned about is, again, the chemicals, the actions out there in a piece of property that is zoned residential. These are not residential practices. If you approve it, it goes to C2, which some of it would. But then again, on a C2 property, what the guy does at the back of his fence line, the city could care less. He wants to store barrels and all that. But they leak. You know, the tank cars, they've been there, they've leaked tar onto my place. I've got to keep my place clean. I don't want to lose my trees and that. So, I'm looking tonight for some kind of protection from the city, just because I live right at the city limits. This is my concern about how we do business. You know, I have worked with the city over forty years, been on numerous committees and that. And so I understand how the city's looking at getting it cleaned up. A map makes sense, everything else out there is zoned too, you know, C2. Getting rid of the purple sage, that's a great idea. But now I'm getting, the new owner's gonna, wants 21st Street. 21st Street is an access to my property. I don't want to forfeit that, but I'm not in the city, so I don't know if I have a claim to 21st, but it comes there. But that is the only access to your twenty-inch water main, is down 21st Street. And then on to my property. Currently, there is no gate, because with the previous administrations, they said, "If we need to, we'll come in, I'll put the gate in, I'll cut it, let you come through on your easement that you have for your twenty-inch main." I've worked with the city, you know, the best I can. I'm looking for the city to work with me. You know, any questions you have for me?
What, what are you suggesting that we do? That's what I want to know.
I don't know if you can do a judicial use on C2, you know. If, you know, what I'd like to see is some kind of response from the city, enforcement of your zoning codes. Now, when the guy is, you know, if he wants to pile junk tires, say, at the back of the property and that, that becomes a nuisance, because when Mr. Cluver had his stuff there, area was flooded with skunks. Now they're gone, the skunks are down. We had one skunk this week. The interstate got him, you know. So, if C2 is allowed there, and it's going to be used for storage, because right now, the property just to the west of that is now a wrecking service, and I've got them towing in the wrecks. The antifreeze and the transmission fluid from the wrecks are running down. It hasn't got to my property yet. But, we've said something, they go, "He has a right to do it, he has a right to store it." But, what am I gaining, you know? You're poisoning my land, I can't let my dogs run loose, because in just that, they'll die. Where's my protection? You know, I went to the planning board, voiced my concern, this is my next step. So I'm looking somehow that the city is going to protect my property too, because the county protects the city. So where I can't go, like I say, a hog farm. I can't go in there and do a sewage transfer station or anything like that, next to the city, because it may interfere with your citizens' rights to have health, or whatever they do want for the city. I have to protect your rights, what are you going to do to protect my rights? So that's why I'm against the zone change on the one parcel. The rest of them, I'm on the city planning board. We worked through each and every single one. We contacted every single owner, I have no problems with that. On this one, I abstained, I sat out in the audience, just because I, you know, feel that it's a, not really an attack on me, but an invasion of my health and profit, and, you know, enjoyment of life. So I need something enforcing, I need, you know, some controls on whoever gets that C2. Because, see, right now, the land slopes dramatically to my property, well, everything runs there. They haul in dirt and dirt and dirt. But, to develop that as a building on it, it has to be step fill, because of the grade. You have to go in and fill it, compact it, fill it, compact it. That hasn't been done. The dirt's been in, it's been spread over where the, the, uh, car crushing incident was. You know, and then when I talked to the code enforcer, it was, well, it's to be determined if it was a hazard. Well, my trees died in that area, because the stuff came there.
It seems like to me that we'd be able to work that problem like we have the other problems in our community, where if you find something that's dangerous or a hazard, you want to clean it. We give them a citation, we give them so many days to clean it, they don't clean it, and we go in and clean it, and we send them the bill. Does that sound like something that would work?
Well, what I did is, I went to the police department on another incident, where I had, where the truck drivers were coming in and throwing the bottles of urine onto my place, and the bags of feces and garbage was coming in on my place. I went to your police department, police department, I got no action. I went to the city manager, he was out of town, so I went to Mr. Hannan, when he was the fire chief. He went out, when he looked at the situation, and then we had the city manager, then we had the police station, then citation, you know. But it took an extra lot of effort that I don't feel that I should have had to go through. You know, and Mr. Hannan, you know, he has worked with me out there. You know, I, like I say, I want Rawlins to look nice from the interstate. That's why the trees are there. It hides the backyards. You know, my place, I don't know if you notice it with the trees and everything, we try and make a good image of saying, "Hey, that's a nice community, we want to come to it." You know, and like I said, I've worked with every council for forty years. So, you know, I'm just trying to get some, you know, kind of response, some kind of guideline for this zone change, because residential's got more restrictions on it than a C2. So you're going from something that I can say, "You're in violation," to C2. Well, that's perfectly fine, because he's allowed a wrecking yard, he's allowed, you know, a detail shop, or, you know, something else that may interfere. It's coming on to my property out of the city. What do I do? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Richard. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on behalf of the zoning map? Okay, we will move on down to citizens' participation. This is where citizens have five minutes to discuss something that is not on the current agenda. Anybody would like to come up? Please state your name and sign the signature there, please.
My name is Joey Marandino.
Melissa Jolly.
Good evening, members of the Rawlins City Council. Please allow me to introduce myself. My name is Joey Marandino, and I am the president of Pet Partners of Carbon County. For anyone who may not be familiar with Pet Partners of Carbon County, I would like to give you a quick overview of our three programs. Pet Partners of Carbon County pays for each animal in the Rawlins Rochelle Animal Shelter to be vaccinated and spayed and neutered. The shelter makes appointments at Carbon County Veterinary Hospital as needed, and the veterinarian office fills Pet Partners of Carbon County directly. We give out half-price spay-neuter coupons to the public. Any resident of Carbon County can get a coupon by mailing in an application. Volunteer will then send out a coupon in the mail. These coupons can be used at either vet's office in town. Pet Partners of Carbon County also has an exceptional TNVR, which is trap-neuter, vaccinate, and release program for feral cats. In 2019, two hundred and twenty-three feral cats have gone through our program. Adult feral cats are spayed, neutered, and vaccinated with a CVRC vaccine and a rabies vaccine. Kittens under twelve weeks of age are chained and adopted out. These kittens are vaccinated with a CVRC vaccine, then a booster CVRC vaccine, dewormed once, and then adopted out. These kittens are sent with a coupon to be spayed, neutered at six months of age at Pet Partners of Carbon County's expense. The programs that Pet Partners of Carbon County offers to the Rawlins Rochelle Animal Shelter, to the residents of Carbon County, and for the feral cats without a voice, cost us between three thousand and five thousand dollars each month. For the first ten months of 2019, Pet Partners of Carbon County has spent a total of thirty-two thousand, five hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-four cents, just in veterinary expenses. From that total, Pet Partners of Carbon County has paid eleven thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents to Carbon County Vet Hospital to vaccinate and spay-neuter each animal in the Rawlins Rochelle Animal Shelter. That's roughly one-third of our budget. Tragically, during our monthly meeting in October, it became apparent that our incoming bills have exceeded our fundraising capabilities. Pet Partners of Carbon County has run out of funds. We have frozen our accounts at both veterinary offices until further notice. This means we cannot pay for the vaccination and spay-neuter of the animals in the Rawlins Rochelle Animal Shelter, nor can we honor the half-price spay-neuter coupons to the public, or the spay-neuter coupons that have been given out with the kittens that have been adopted. And some of them have been adopted from the shelter, and some adopted from Pet Partners of Carbon County directly. Members of Pet Partners of Carbon County are concerned about the health of the animals in the Rawlins Rochelle Animal Shelter. We are requesting that the city or the Rawlins City Council decide on a plan to continue with the vaccination and the spay-neuter of each animal that enters the shelter. Vaccination and the spay-neuter of each animal is necessary, is a necessary step in ensuring that the Rawlins Rochelle Animal Shelter maintains its no-kill status. Pet Partners of Carbon County would like to offer a suggestion of a grant that may be available to the Rawlins Rochelle Animal Shelter. Spay-Neuter Wyoming offers year-long spay-neuter grants to animal shelters in the state of Wyoming. I personally gave the contact information for Spay-Neuter Wyoming to one of the animal control officers in late October, but I have not received confirmation that the shelter has applied for this grant. If the Rawlins City Council is interested in applying for this grant, I am able to provide the contact information for the director of Spay-Neuter Wyoming. Pet Partners of Carbon County is also requesting that the Rawlins City Council review its decision to withhold the payment of fifteen hundred dollars to us for the previous quarter. Pet Partners of Carbon County fulfilled every requirement in the contract, except to supply the report to the city of Rawlins by October 3rd. In our report, we show the number of animals we vaccinated, spayed or neutered, how many half-price coupons we mailed out, how much money we raised, how much money we spent, and the dates of our completed trash cleanups, from July 1st to September 30th. The number of animals vetted and the money raised spent are counted up to the last day of the quarter. It is unrealistic to gather the numbers from the veterinary offices and the treasurer in order to submit the report within the first three days of the next month. In previous years, we were giving a grace period until the fifteenth of the month, and Pet Partners of Carbon County assumed this grace period extended to the current fiscal year. Please forgive us for this misunderstanding. If the city of Rawlins reverses its decision, the fifteen hundred dollars will be used by Pet Partners of Carbon County to honor all the half-price coupons and kitten spay-neuter coupons that were already given out prior to November 1st, 2019. Thank you for allowing the time for me to speak tonight, and may I answer any questions for you?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for everything you do.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak?
Honorable mayor and council, this is Mr. Larry Justiceon. He's been a volunteer for the recreation center for many years, and it's well-known that if you have a family member that works for the rec center, you're automatically a volunteer. Therefore, Larry's career began with the employment of his wife, Miss Judy, who also has accompanied him this evening. His talents are many, ranging from the basic toting, lugging, transporting, and support through participation, to dancing. I believe we had dance lessons one year, and the next year, the year after that. And that was a volunteering thing. Yes, and finally, this past year, I don't know if anyone else wants to hear. This past few years, he's been in the varmint and critter control for the golf course, the parks, and the ball fields. We are deeply appreciative of his initiative and dedication to our facilities and to the community, and he has made a difference, and you know that, don't you? The staff of the Department of Recreation Services would like to honor Mr. Justiceon with the 2019 Volunteer of the Year Award. His name will be placed on the Reed Lawrence Memorial Plackett in the recreation center. We thank you, Mr. Larry, for your dedication. Would you like to shake hands with the council on Tuesday?
I need to say something, though, because it's been made fairly easy for me, because the products that are used out there are donated by Carbon County in the past. And the health corps staff, Jericho and all, are so good about netting us used vehicles, for lighting products. The lions club, the Rawlins Lions Club, purchased a fodder that we use for mosquitoes. So, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of help around me, and so I need to acknowledge that. It's not just on me, I've got a lot of help.
I think you kicked in the program, though, if I'm not correct.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak? Okay, Scott, apparently we're not airing tonight. There's some problems with the TV, we're blacked out.
Oh, are we? Um, it doesn't work on?
He's working on it.
Okay, perfect.
We just sent people on there.
We got people working on it, alright.
We got people working on it.
Now we'll move on down to city council reports. First one we have is the Board of Adjustments, and that'd be myself, Mayor Nicholson. I have nothing to report. The next one, we have COG, which is again, myself. Tomorrow night, we have a COG meeting at Jeffrey Center at 6:00 PM, if there's anybody that would like to attend that. And then we'll move on down to the DDA Main Street, Councilwoman Smith. She is not here tonight, and I don't believe anybody has anything for her. Also, the next one is Rawlins Planning and Commission, Councilman Espinoza. He is not here tonight, so we'll move on down to Urban Systems Committee, Councilman Sanger.
I have nothing to report.
That went quick and easy. I'll move on down to the Minutes, to approve the minutes of October 22nd, 2019, special meeting. Councilwoman Martinez.
May I make a motion to approve the minutes of November 5th?
Nope, special meeting.
Excuse me, approve the minutes of October 22nd, 2019, special meeting.
One second. We have a first and a second. Any questions in regards to those minutes? Would you open online voting, please?
Can I ask a protocol question?
Sure.
Can I, so I was, like, two minutes late for that meeting? When I was here at this beginning, would I have to abstain?
No, because you attended the meeting.
Okay.
You were just late.
I want to make sure that that didn't get weird.
You were just late.
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with five DAs.
Okay, I will move on down to the approval of the minutes of November 5th, 2019, regular meeting. Councilman Martinez.
May I make a motion that we approve the minutes of November 5th, 2019, if there are no corrections or additions?
Councilman Durst seconds. Any questions or comments in regards to that? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Okay, I was behind the ball, who voted?
Councilman Martinez is first, Councilman Durst is second.
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with five DAs.
Alright, thank you, Sherry. Next, we'll move on down to correspondence and reports, department, department monthly reports. Does anybody have any questions in regards to that? Nope, okay. We'll move on down to approval of the agenda. Councilwoman, what else?
I move to approve the November 19th, 2019, city council agenda as presented.
Okay. Councilman Sanger, seconds. Any questions in regard to that? If there is not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with five DAs.
Okay, now we'll move on down to unfinished business. Approve Wyoming vehicle dealership license and bond requirements.
Honorable mayor and council, I'll bring it back before you. We did a little more research on this, and the question is, when we go out to bid for new vehicles, and this is in regards to state statute, 151113, talks about a five percent surety bond when we, we'll have to buy a new vehicle specifically, like cars and pickups that we use. One of the things that we talked about a little bit was a dealer bond, and that kind of come up, I think, in our public comment last time. Since that time and that meeting, we talked about that. Attorney myself met with one of the car dealers, with Mr. Kevin Ward, and we talked a little bit about the process that they go through. And I also provided that information to you in board docs of the process that the dealers go through. And one of the questions that Mr. Ward had is the same question that I've kind of had all along with this statute, is when we purchase cars and trucks, or when we purchase anything for that matter, we don't pay upfront. And so, the, especially when we're going to go order a pickup or whatever, a police car from a local car dealer, we don't pay for that vehicle until it shows up here or on the lot, and they say, "Hey, we got your vehicle ready, you want to come down and get it." Our car seems kind of irrelevant, because the only thing that we're really out is the time that it took to go through the process to wait for the vehicle to show up. And so, I was intrigued about the dealer bond, and like I said, I provided that information. And in a nutshell, if you sell three vehicles, and this doesn't matter if they're new or used vehicles, if you sell more than three vehicles in twelve consecutive months, you're required to apply for a Wyoming dealer's license through Wyoming Department of Transportation. Of course, that process involves that if you're a first-time applicant, you'll have to go through a criminal background check, you'll have to be fingerprinted, pay the application fee to have a dealer's license, and then on an annual basis, you provide a twenty-five thousand dollar surety bond to the state of Wyoming. And what that bond basically says, i- is the bond is conditioned that if the applicant shall not practice, that the applicant shall not practice any fraud, fraudulent misrepresentations, or violate any federal or state law, rule, or regulations relating to the conduct of business. If so, the bond will be forfeited to the department, which is YDOT, if the applicant violates this provision. So, what they're, what they're basically bonding themselves with the state of Wyoming for is good business practices to protect the consumer, which would be us, from the car dealer. Now, the statute gives the council the authority to consider this as a five percent... Now, the statute gives the council the authority to consider this as a 5% surety for these vehicles. And what that would mean is if you, if it was your desire to allow us to accept a Wyoming Dealer's License and Bond, when people submitted a bid for a new pickup or a car, we would be able to put that language in our bid specs, when we release the bid specs, that in lieu of a 5%, we would also accept a Wyoming Dealer's License for that. So that's what we'd be asking for. The hope on that is to hopefully get more Wyoming dealers bidding on these vehicles for us, and ideally, more local vendors submitting bids for us to buy pickups and cars. This doesn't affect anything else other than this provision on the new vehicles. So if we, you know, a million-dollar fire truck, we'd have a performance. And a dump truck, we would have separate provisions on those. This is just for, this part of the statute that recognizes that we have to do something for new vehicle purchases. It seems like this was a compromise, at least with the one local dealer, I haven't reached out to him. He wanted to go buy a used pickup. To go through this process on the bonding. It's just a way that we're hoping to solve this problem that we've talked about for years, to try to solve this, and I would stand for any questions.
One of the questions Scott, that we asked, last meeting, was a letter of credit. They could get a letter of credit on a particular vehicle, say it's $10,000, they get a letter of credit for $10,000, and we pay them, they pay the bank, and everybody's happy. Wouldn't that work?
Mr. Mayor, do you want me to answer that, or do you want a motion? Before we get into discussion?
Yeah, let's go ahead and get a motion on this first, then we can open up discussion. Councilman Martinez?
For the purpose of discussion, I make a motion that we approve the Wyoming Vehicle Dealership License and Bond Requirements.
Second?
Second.
You have a first and a second on that? Okay, go ahead and we'll open the floor for discussion.
I can answer your question.
That was my question, yeah.
Mayor and Councilmember Martinez, there's nothing that prohibits us from taking a letter of credit now, as long as it would reach the 5% of the vehicle purchase. So we can, that is available option to them now, or submitting a check for 5%. This would just be another tool to recognize, hey, we understand that you are paying a license fee to be a car dealer in Wyoming, you put up a bond in good faith to do good business. And again, I think the biggest question that the automobile dealers had along with us was, what are we bonding for in the instance of buying a vehicle? We're not out any cash, we haven't put any money out, we're only out the time that it takes them to order the vehicle and have it show up and then purchase it. So, it's just something that, it was an alternative that come out to see if we can help, another way that we can do business to encourage, to sell in Wyoming and locals, absolutely.
So, one of my questions here, Scott, I guess, is with this vehicle dealer license requirement, the $25,000 surety bond to YDOT, what if something did happen and we would have to file on this? I don't know if we legally could file on a bond with YDOT.
No, and I guess that kind of goes back to the second part of my question, what are we bonding for?
Well, true. I guess, you know, I don't know if it's maybe a situation where we were given a date that it was going to be here on the 30th, and we knew our previous cars were on their last leg, and they finally went out, and then the cars didn't come in for six, eight months after that, and then we're in the pickle, have happened to go out and maybe buy something somewhere else to temporarily get by. You know, a situation like that could be where we'd need to try to go after the dealer to help fix the money we spent in the meantime, or...
Well, you know, I guess, you know, we wouldn't spend any money. So if we went out to bid, and that was one thing that we did look at talking with the dealers, that was an educational part for us, looking at our bid specs on vehicles, that's the only wild card out there for the local car dealer, is, you know, they're selling, you know, Chevys or Chryslers, and they place their order with the corporation for this pickup or this car. And before, a lot of ours, bid specs were getting out the door with 60 to 90-day timeframes, which for them, they felt that 120 days, there's no reason really why that they can't deliver a vehicle. And then the good faith clause of the dealers, you know, we've had those conversations, that if all else fails, if they can't get us one, they can use their network of dealers and say, hey, we can get you one down in Denver, and we'll go get it and bring it here. So I think the good faith exists there. If it come down that they couldn't deliver it anyway, you'd have that choice to go back and visit your bid spec, but after 120 days and you didn't get it, you'd probably have to rebid it out again anyway. And, you know, the chances of us, you know, just go buy another vehicle, unless it was a used vehicle, we'd be right back to square one. So the hope is that we'll get more people to submit bids, and I think, you know, the history shows that, you go back and look at our bid awards and our bid processes and our tabulation forms, and there's a huge absence of local car dealers on those bid tab forms. And I think it also becomes, you know, a little bit more paramount, you know, just for warranty work and things like that, and, you know, just their local car dealer, we want to help them. And if this is one thing that we can do to help accommodate that, it's not showing favoritism, because any Wyoming, anybody that has a Wyoming Dealer's License would meet that requirement if it was in our bid spec. So, I think it's just another way, an alternative way to do business. Again, I really don't know what we're bonding for in this instance, on such a small purchase as this, as a vehicle. Because again, we're not out any cash.
Councilman Sanger?
I don't think the problem is whether or not we can collect on their $25,000 surety bond, because clearly states that we cannot.
Right.
It's that the state statute requires us to take a surety bond. It's not that we're choosing or not choosing to take one, we're required by law to take one.
And you would be taking this in lieu of that?
Right, but that's not a bond.
Right.
There's no money, I can't collect anything, and they're required to provide us 5%, some way to collect money. That's what they're requiring us to do. That's what the state, that's what the state's requiring us to do. I believe this is a state's question, it's not, and at some point, they came up with this, I don't know why they came up with it, but they came up with it, and we can, we're not really taking any money on their $25,000, which is the requirement of the bond for 151113, that we take a 5% surety somehow. And if you take just a personal check, you're not cashing the check. What's the problem with that? You're not, they're not spending any actual money, nothing's actually occurring. You're going to turn around and hand it right back and say, thanks, that was great, you've done business.
Whenever the vehicle shows up. So they're out, they're out that money for 90 or 120 days.
You're not cashing it, nothing's happening with it.
Well, we're holding it.
Yeah.
But that's, that's a debt, that they, that's a debt service, they've written a check, that's a debt on their account.
Are we depositing said check?
We can, they can get interest on some of them, you know? It's just those things, so.
We do cash those checks.
Yes, we do cash those checks. So it's a debt that they pay, and then, and then it's a process, again, that if you're not the winning bidder, then we return that money. And but the money that, to the winning bidder, we hold that. And I guess that's, that's been the other, the second part of this whole question, and like you say, I agree with you, Councilmember Sanger, that it's a question of the state, is what are we bonding for? We are not out anything at all. And it seems like that is ridiculous, and at best, and it's frustrating for, I think, the process, but, and like I say, that's a question for another day. Legislation, I guess, but we were just trying to come up with some sort of alternative to promote business. The council does have the authority to accept that.
The only ones that it would affect would be the small, small dealers, because our larger dealers always, they put in a bid, they have the bond money.
Our locals don't.
Our locals don't. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, they have a good deal.
The smaller dealers, our locals, they can't bid because they don't have that. The way you're talking is that they're going to write us a check, we're not going to cash it, so they're not out any money, and the car comes in, they get their check back. Does that sound right?
They deposit.
Yeah, we do, we do deposit them, because we don't, because the check can go bad. You know, if we hold it long enough.
I see what you're saying.
So it does, yeah, it does get cashed, and that's what I'm saying, is it was just a way to look to try to do business. We've talked about this for, I bet, 20 years around this table, have tried to figure out a way, and I don't think it's a fact that they can't afford to write a check for 5%. I think it comes down to the principle of the thing that, you know, that they're paying a license to the State of Wyoming to sell cars, they're providing a $25,000 bond on an annual basis to be in business to sell cars, and now they got to provide another bond to a municipality to sell a car to that, as you heard from the last, when they were here and provided some testimony, they're not making any money on these vehicle sales to a city, anyway, and it's costing them money to bid them. And, you know, right, wrong, or indifferent, that just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But that's, that's what we found after the last conversation, when we had met and done some research and looked into it, that's to follow up to this, to see what your pleasure was on it, if we wanted to take action.
Councilman Driscoll, do you have anything to add?
Well, I guess I'm curious how, and of course, Amy's sick and had to leave, but I don't, I question if we can't, I mean, I don't feel like this meets the state law. Am I wrong on that?
My conversation with the attorney, if she comes back in, is it's your pleasure.
Okay, so she agrees that this would fulfill...
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not going to put words in her mouth, she said it's the council's pleasure if you want to accept that in lieu of that.
Okay.
And if she comes back in, you can surely ask that question.
Okay.
If you have your same question, well, we can take a little breather here for a minute and wait for Amy to come back in, so if you can ask for that question, it'll help.
I think that's where sticky lines.
I guess I'm questioning what's the point, is this, from what I'm hearing, this will give us no value, nothing to go back on, recuperate.
It does not satisfy...
So if we, if a vehicle was ordered, and it's six months late, it's just too bad, so sad, that's what you get.
Well, no, it's not necessarily, there's a recourse in there as a consumer and a customer. And if the dealer can't get it in 120 days, and you can say, hey, you know, you promised this, this was your oath and your condition to get a license with the State of Wyoming.
I thought that was what the bond was, it covered the cost of rebid and going through all of that.
Well, it's not even going to come close at 5% on a pickup, I can tell you that, by the time we go through the process. You know, the main thing is you want to be able to get the vehicle, right? And they're going to work in good faith with you, because if not, you can file against the, you know, they're going to say, the state's going to say, hey, you're not doing very good business practices there. They have a lot to lose. They have to, you know, they're going to, that bond says that we are going to do business in ethical ways. And if you think back, you know, the shady car salesman back in the day, maybe this language was there to have people be licensed to do good business. So selling a car for no profit to the city of Rollins, they have a lot bigger profit margins to worry about, selling cars and keeping their dealer license and being in business and working with us. And I can say, in the time that I've been involved with this, buying a vehicle, we had one that got, well, let me tell you how our luck's went for a while there. We had one police car on a transport, on a train transport, that got severely damaged, and then it got delivered down to install or down in Laramie, so, or in Colorado, we're not going to accept that one. Is that the dealer's fault? Is that our fault? Transportation company's fault? Who knows? And then we had one that the dealer just basically forgot that they had won the bid, and we called up and said, hey, what are you doing? He said, you know, I can't help you, I can't even get one of those vehicles, keep my bid bond, and then we awarded it to the second person that had got that, and we got a vehicle. And then we had one pickup that got delivered on a car dealership in Cheyenne, and it was getting ready to get delivered to Rollins, and it got stolen off the car lot. Was that our fault? Was that necessarily the dealer's fault? Maybe, maybe it was an employee's fault that left some keys in it or something. So, you know, what I'm saying, by and large, as everybody in this room went down and bought a vehicle from a dealership, it's really not that complicated process to go down and buy a vehicle, and this just seems to make it more of a complicated process. But I understand that, you know, the desire and our obligation to comply with state statute. And again, like I say, I would...
Well, because we do it with, like, if we're not, put a bid out for lawn mowers or a piece of equipment for...
Anything over 35, well, and that's what's unique about the statute, is there is a statutory dollar limit of $35,000, except that a contract for the purchase or lease of a new automobile or truck shall be advertised regardless of the cost. So we have to advertise that for sure, for a vehicle, and then you go down later in the statute about, if you do bid something out, that's when you come down, if you do, then you go down to Section F, and it says, in advertising for any bid, the forms of guarantee required under this section and approved by the City Council or Joint Powers Board shall be specified. Period. In addition, bidders shall be required to accompany each bid with a bid bond, or if the bid is $150,000 or less, any other form of bid guarantee approved by the city, town, or Joint Powers Board equal to at least 5% of the total bid amount, sufficient surety and payable to the city. So, you know, if you wanted to stick with that, the way that verbiage...
Well, I mean, how do you not stick with state law?
No, that's what I'm saying, is it contradicts itself in this wording, says the city, either way. We were asked to bring this back, it's your pleasure. If you feel that it's violating state law, obviously, our recommendation would be not to do that.
I guess my thing is that we'd be challenged if we change it.
I don't know why you would be. I don't know why you would be challenged, but who would challenge it?
The state.
The state? I guess if the Attorney General Police want to come and challenge that, they probably would. But I mean, no dealership's going to challenge it, I mean, so...
So can we, um...
Table it?
Table this?
I would prefer to not.
Until we can actually, maybe we can table it, just for, move on down the row here a couple, until Amy comes back in. Can we do that?
Works for me.
So, do we need to make a motion, I think, just to move that aside for a minute, or...
I think if you table it, I don't know that you can come back to it in this meeting.
Okay.
I think you probably just...
I don't feel okay with that, we can table it.
If you want to just, if you want to just table it to the next meeting, or you want to postpone it indefinitely?
Okay. Let's just table it to the next meeting. Do you need a motion for that?
Okay.
Make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor, do we have a second? We need to kill that motion and then table it? Does that sound...
Leave the table and overrun your business. Now you have a motion, the second on the floor, you have to either withdraw your second and first, and then change a motion.
Yeah.
Or take a vote on it, one way or the other.
Well, I can withdraw on my second.
And I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay.
Now we can get a motion table.
So, do we have a motion to table it? We have a first?
Second.
We have a second, okay. So, Sherry, could you open online voting to table that motion till the next council meeting, please?
We'll just take a minute.
Okay.
Just said 9,000. You made the first motion?
I was going to say.
Your second? Our line voting is closed and the motion carries with five yeas.
Okay, we'll move on down to New Business, Approval of Payroll. Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve the October 27th, 2019, through November 9th, 2019, payroll register,
We have a second? We have a first and a second? Any questions in regards to the approval of payroll? If there is not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
I have difficulties with my last one.
I love this thing. I'll make this guy. All with it?
Yeah. I did.
Leave the tree, waste a minute.
Life's short, but we have long trees.
Did you suck it in?
That one?
I did.
Leave the tree, waste a minute.
Life's short, but we have long trees.
Our line voting is closed and the motion carries with five GAs.
Okay, now we'll move on down to approval of accounts payable. Councilman Sanger?
I move to approve the accounts payable register for the period of October thirty-first, twenty nineteen to November fourteenth, twenty nineteen, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and seven dollars and ninety cents.
Councilman Durst, one second? Is there any questions in regards to?
I, I, I'm sorry, I just had two quick questions.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I, I'm just curious what this was, this, um, I don't, I don't know how to get anybody, you or Dustin there, I don't know. Twelve, six, four, six, it just says emergency reporting, one year subscription Wyoming fire package to the fire department?
Yeah.
I, I'm just curious what it was.
Honorable mayor and council, um, we report all fires in all instances to the state of Wyoming, and then it goes through a national database to collect data for fires. Uh, the Wyoming, the emergency reporting software is this software that we utilize for that purpose.
Oh, okay.
And so there's a subscription fee associated with that.
But then that gives you access to see everything else, right? I mean, that's, it goes back and forth?
It, well, uh, no, uh, basically, it is, it is the one-way transmitter, it's our, it, it's, it's the software for the fire department, basically, how we track everything.
Right.
And then it also, by, we're required to report those fires to the state level, and then, at the state level, certain fields of information and emergency reporting gets stripped off, and then it goes to the national level, and that's how they build your national fatality, your national fire statistics. That's how they catch product recalls, because we do reporting, say, hey, we had a Mr. Coffee coffee pot catch on fire. Hey, what a coincidence, there was four other in Wyoming, and hey, what do you know? There was three hundred of them in California. And so now, that's how product, so it's a tool that gets used nationwide.
Quick, I was, I was, one more, just one quick one.
Try the best.
No, you'll be all right. Uh, I just, I, I think we talked about this once, I'm sorry, I just don't remember. So like, this is pre-employment and post-accident, uh, UA testing, right? So one is the Memorial Hospital, but then a couple go to Quest Diagnostics.
Yes.
I, I, I was just, I, I don't, I think we talked about this, I just don't remember what the differences were.
Okay.
There's significant changes in how much is paid, but it seems like the same test.
Yeah, so, honorable mayor, uh, council member Durst. Uh, so when we do pre-employment drug screening, or we do post-accident drug screening, the process is they go to Memorial Hospital, and Memorial Hospital of Carbon County collects the sample. So there's a fee associated with collecting that sample.
And Quest does the testing.
Yeah, so, yeah, so Memorial Hospital collects the sample up, they, um, ship it off, chained custody to Quest Diagnostic Labs. Quest Diagnostic Labs gets it, they process it, and then there's an MRO, which is a medical review officer. And, and Marlo's not here, but I've heard this so many times, I'm trying my best. So then the MRO officer reviews that and determines the results, whether it's a positive or negative sample. And at that point, then it's, the results are shipped, are, uh, communicated to us via, uh, email. And so there, there is two different companies, there is a, it's a process.
I remember that, I knew we had discussed it, I was just, I was just need a refresher.
No, no problem at all, thank you.
I have my questions.
Okay. Any more questions?
Not for me.
If not, Sherry, would you open online voting, please?
Our line voting is closed and the motion carries with five GAs.
We'll move on down to item C in ordinance. First reading, amending the Rawlins initial code, chapter fifteen, dot twenty-four, building codes.
Honorable mayor, council, thank you for allowing me to appear before you tonight. I'd like to start with, uh, with the fact that we, as a city of Rawlins, um, like to think of ourselves as leaders and not followers. I stand before you tonight to request you to lead our community by making a stand on safety for new construction and residential structures. We've already come so far in the name of safety by adopting codes, numerous codes. However, in eliminating part, in eliminating part of a couple of different sections, I believe we have created an unsafe building standard. And I'm not the only one that believes that. Our building official, our code official believes that. I, I certainly know that the firefighters believe that. Uh, our police officers should certainly believe that, and our EMS people should certainly believe that. Where we've, where we've kinda drawn the line in the sand is, is we've traded costs, and, and not a significant cost for, for safety. And it, and it's not just residential occupant's safety, it's our kids' safety, it's my safety, it's Lou's safety, it's your safety. Codes are made by many professionals, engineers, builders, officials, and others to make buildings safe and affordable. This covers things like GFI outlets, arc fault circuit breakers, and how to attach drywall to the studs. Fire sprinklers are part of these codes. If you look at this room, for example, codes we have adopted are responsible for the sprinklers that you see in the ceiling, the fire rated tiles that are above your head. This aisle with those doors that have a fire rating on it. The exit lights that show the egress to the doors that have panic hardware and open to the outside. All of those codes that this body has adopted make these buildings the way they are. We take what you tell us as codes, and we turn those through construction into these buildings that are safe for us to occupy. The electrical conductors in the walls are part of those codes that we have adopted in this room, this body has adopted. Fire in the home poses one of the most significant threats to the people of our community. NFP identifies the greatest risks are adults over the age of sixty-five, children under the age of five years old, persons with disabilities. Sprinklers reduce civilian fire injury total cost by forty-one percent. Sprinklers are responsible for an estimated sixty-five reduc-, sixty-five percent reduction in firefighter or fire ground injuries. If a residential occupancy is equipped with sprinklers, the occupants have a ninety percent survival rate. Sprinklers reduce the annual cost of direct property damage by four point eight billion dollars nationally. Four point eight billion dollars. The losses that insurance company incurs have doubled over the last five years. That's directly resulting to construction costs and how construction is done. Ostra prohibitive is no longer a valid excuse to not require sprinkler systems in new construction. We have two Wyoming contractors publicly quoting prices. Lane Pilbin, owner of Wyoming Fire Protection quoted a dollar fifty per square foot and appeared before this board and testified to the fact he will come to Rawlins and install systems for that cost. JD Gamble, owner of Life Safety Solution, quoted a price of a dollar thirty-one per square foot to install systems in new construction in the Sheridan area. He's gone so far in his beliefs that he donated the materials and the labor to build two identical houses and to see which one sold first. They haven't sold because they just completed them, but it's a no-brainer, which one's gonna go first. It's worth more. It's worth more to the occupants because they'll get a better deal on their insurance premiums. We confirmed a hundred percent of the insurance companies give a premium rate for sprinkler systems. You had one of those individuals appear before you at a work session, and Ben absolutely supports the sprinkler industry. Even mine, this only applies to new construction from the date of adoption. Also, from the date that that passes, only new construction is the only thing it applies to, nothing existing. Luiscano reached out to Ivan Cruz, Mrs. Cruz conducted our insurance service office rating for the city of Rawlins. She was asked, how much does eliminating the residential sprinklers out of the code affect our rating? Her response was five percent on our score. Having our insurance service office lessen our protection rating has severe consequences to our ability to attract business based on what potential property owners will pay for insurance. This in turn trickles down to residential drawings. Fire hybrid distances may be reduced in residential neighborhoods if that residential neighborhood is constructed with residential sprinklers. Gibson Board is not required, required in basement if the residence is sprinkled, and a furnace room does not have to be framed off in sheet rock if the home is sprinkled. Fire hybrids are allowed to be spaced further apart, water mains may be reduced in size, all reducing costs to developers. It was not that long ago, we had a developer that came before this group and wanted to, to build a, a housing subdivision, um, by the, by the church up here on Colorado Street. One of our concerns was that there were dead-end, um, lanes in that subdivision. Had that been a sprinkled subdivision from the beginning of the plans, we wouldn't have been concerned. Because it would have reduced the requirements. Saving money for them and maybe making that project possible. This is for public safety. Immunity risk reduction for the first responder safety, including firefighters, police officers, and emergency medical providers. I have checked with the police department and the police chief, and he agrees with me. We know that what we do in our, in our lives as first responders, if a house is on fire and there's kids in that house, or adults, and we know they're there, we're gonna go in. We're gonna try to affect that rescue. That's just what we do, and it's who we are. If that house is sprinkled, chances are they're gonna survive and we're gonna survive. Exempting the sprinkler requirement, we have absolutely removed the key element that allowed open construction floor plans, reduced fire rated doors, or compartmentalization, lightweight trests and joists for roofs and floors. Sprinklers were the one key element that made this construction method safe. What we're building today is absolutely not a safe building construction plan for residential occupancies. I have asked Michelle Carnes to take time out of her busy life and out of her schedule and away from her family to, to address the council. I hope you allow her a few minutes of your time to visit with you about her experience and the fire in her home. I had, um, during our presentation or, in our workshop, I had quoted a, a, a cost of about a hundred thousand dollars. And that was by, uh, by my estimate when I did the fire investigation on the structure. I missed that mark, and I missed it by a long ways. And the biggest reason that I missed it by full, so far, is the hydrocarbons in the smoke. The carbon molecules, the carbon particles in that smoke are, are so ill-wanted in construction. They're down to the conductors, the electrical conductors, that the state electrical inspector made them pull out all of the Romex out of the walls because they're contaminated with carbon particles. That was a single room in contents fire. There's no fire doors there because they're not required by code. One room is pretty much destroying that whole house. And I'll let her tell you her story. Michelle? Michelle Carnes, all the city councils, all the city council, Michelle Carnes.
Honorable mayor and council, thank you for letting me speak to you this evening. Um, on June eighteenth, I got a call from one of my children who was home saying that my fire alarm was going off. Um, I had three ten-year-olds at the hu-, in the house at that time. My oldest son had went to lunch, he wasn't gone more than an hour, and came back to, but, truck, fire trucks and, you know, police officers and, um, a really upset mom and dad. Um, a light bulb is what caused the fire. Again, I had three children home. Luckily, um, I had taught them what to do when they heard a fire alarm, and they reacted very well. They did exactly what they were taught, they heard the fire alarm going off, they ran outside, got a neighbor, um, who just happens to be the wife of a police officer. She went into my home, seen the flames, tried to, um, get a pitcher of water, and by the time she got back to the room that the flames were in, it was out of control. So in the, say, twenty seconds that she went to get a pitcher of water, my room was up in flames. Um, when I got there, my kids were very shaken up, as you can understand, um, but they were alive, thank goodness. Um, we did, I apologize, you know, but, uh, the kids, fi- fire department and police officers, um, took very good care of them. Their father and I both work out of town, so we were both forty, at least forty minutes away when we got the phone call. Um, we lost three kittens in the fire that day. Um, I have some pictures here of the house that I will let you guys look at. What you don't see in those pictures is a room that our master bedroom was upstairs, completely away from the fire, not damaged by flames at all. Um, but because of the smoke damage in my home, there was a perfect outline of one of my kittens where it had passed away. Um, that could have been one of my children. It, it honestly could have been. When we were picking for plans for our home, um, there wasn't any restrictions, there wasn't a, you can't have, you know, this tall ceiling or any, anything of the sort, it was pick a plan, we will build it for you. My home was built to code. People of the city signed off on the electrical, they signed off on, you know, drywall and how it was installed. Everything that needed to be done was done to code. That didn't stop a light bulb from failing and catching my home on fire, falling onto a couch that smoldered long, let's say, long enough for my children to be able to get out. We're coming up on the holidays, Thanksgiving is next week. Christmas is a month after that. My kids, I'm sorry, um, we are not gonna be in our home. The cleaners came, they did their job after the cleaners were in our home. Um, the state electrical inspector went in and said, after they've cleaned all of the sheet rock, you have to take all of the sheet rock down. Every inch of your house has to be rewired. So, there was wasted time there. Um, so what I'm getting at with that is that, you know, it could have been, but it's not going to be. John said that he, which is what he told us when we, when we first started this, was he was thinking a hundred thousand dollars in damage, um, between smoke and, and the room that we lost. Um, we were very fortunate and we did not lose everything. But as it's standing right now, the cost to fix my home is going to be greater than the purchase price. And that's what I know of, that's not hidden fees that the insurance company has not disclosed to us. Um, do you guys have any questions for me?
I don't.
No? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor, mayor and council, um, we have, we have these rules in place, and as far as the, the code side, it's really difficult to take pieces that we know that are gonna affect, um, if we do have structure fires. And then you, you go into your residential, your fire code, plumbing code, and, and start chopping this stuff off of the codes. And to me, at that point, it's pretty much a useless code. So these are put in place for a reason, and I think that, uh, as far as the, the building side, I think, um, it would be wise to look at this and, and move forward to adopting these, these sections. I made entry into Carnes' residence that day, and it was hot. Smoke detectors were melted on the walls, so that goes to tell you how hot it gets in them places. It's like Ms. Carnes said, if it was one of the children, there's nothing else that will sit on a firefighter's mind is to have that etched in their, in their mind. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Council, I sincerely hope that you reconsider your position on this municipal code. Ms. Karnes is absolutely correct. I did the fire investigation and found a CFL lamp, which is a compact fluorescent lamp that was installed in a can fixture. I found proof of warning labels from the manufacturer that they're not to be installed in enclosed fixtures. Who knows at what time, whether that was new construction, the electricians put it in, who knows? Certainly not trying to point the finger at anybody here, but it was a failure and it was an innocent failure. Had the open floor plan not been in place in this structure, the damage wouldn't have been near what it was as catastrophic. Had it been built to the old code, the old traditional code of heavy construction and thick sheet rock and closed floor plans, it's like the old homes, it wouldn't have been there as catastrophic as what it was. But it was built to a new standard allowing that, but we took out the one piece of the puzzle that made it possible for that fire, which wasn't really a significant fire. It had a high heat release, short duration, heavy toxic smoke release. Old houses walk in the park. And we were on scene quick. We got on scene very quick because the kids, they heard the fire alarm to go off and they did exactly what they were taught to do from when they were little. They left the house, they went across the street, a neighbor went across the street, she discovered it, quickly figured out that she couldn't fight the fire, went back across the street, got her husband. Her husband, a trained firefighter in his previous career, went to the house, opened the door, the smoke was banked down, did the right thing, closed the door and said, nobody goes in. When we got there, our old tactics, we'd have went through the front door, we'd have found the room of origin, and we'd have done suppression and we would have put it out. Not new houses. We go from the exterior, we attack from a window now. And that's purely to save our own lives, so we go home at the end of the day. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, John. So we get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I was thinking of making a motion to table this, but listening to what you had to say, I would like to see us pass this on first reading, give us a chance to visit some more about it, and then come back and make the decision. I was kind of surprised that this was on the agenda based on the fact that we had already talked about it, and so that kind of threw me off whack, but having said that, I would make a motion that we pass this on first reading, amend in Rollins Municipal Code, Chapter 15 Point 24. Be my motion.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? Any questions or discussion?
So I'm curious, last time when we talked up front, I had asked you about those fire extinguisher bulbs. Didn't you ever look into those?
Yeah, those products, Honorable Mayor and Council, those products have been actually available for quite some time. Previous versions were made out of a chemical called carbon tetra chloride. They're no longer allowed use because it's an oxygen depleting, that's how they work. They remove the oxygen from a compartment space and fire has to have air to function, has to have heat, fuel, and air, remove any one of the three.
So is that what this is?
It is a similar product. Yep.
Because they're advertising, so this has a little rack that you just put on the wall and when the fire gets to it like the sprinkler, it just extinguishes, it's just a powder, right, like a fire extinguisher powder?
Right now, that's not part of any of the codes that we adopt or have adopted or...
Well, I guess I'm asking, would this be a reasonable alternative?
I have never been around any of the trials, so I really don't know. I have read some of the articles on them and of course, I've been hit with some of the vendors. There's always folks coming to the fire station that are selling the latest and greatest in suppression. Right now, the best suppressant that we have in a Class 8 combustible fire is water. It cools the fire and we have a lot of it.
I guess I'm just thinking that this would work for, I mean, I could put this in a 1920 house.
Sure. I haven't really been exposed to them, I've never seen them actually used.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Dursey, you could absolutely put it in a 1920s house or 1980s house if you want it. You could put it in a brand new house if you want it. But what the problem with that is, it's not recognized by the NFPA standard, it's not recognized by the building code or the fire code as a recommended way to allow for these open type construction. As Chief Rutherford said and Lou Liscano, the building official, when we allowed these codes to change and we adopted the change in the codes, we basically wrote a recipe to have these buildings burn. Because we deleted the fire sprinkler component out of them. That's how these new homes have had the open floor plans. It was designed from the original onset, yeah, we'll allow this to happen. And the reason we're allowing that happen is we're gonna put residential sprinklers in these to make these homes nicer. And because of political motivations primarily, people wanted to leave this residential sprinkler code as a local option to people. And it is a local option, and you just heard from one of the local citizens saying what how catastrophic it was to their family in a brand new home that was built to code. It was inspected and built to code and there's got to be a trade-off there. People want to know that they're safe in their homes. I think that's a primary mission of everybody, they want to be safe in the homes that they buy. And I'm not going to speak for the Karnes', but I'm sure that they thought that they were safe in a brand new home that was built, that was inspected to code. What they probably didn't know was a key element that made that home safe was deleted by the adoption of the code. And not only in this jurisdiction, several jurisdictions across the United States. So it's a key factor. That's what we're saying, is new houses, when they're built, if they're gonna be built to that, then they need to have the sprinklers the way the code was intended to be, so these people are safe. And firefighters are safe.
The whole concern, Scott, I don't think anybody up here disagrees with fire safety and what these sprinkler systems can really do. We've watched the demonstrations, all of us believe in that. What scares us the most is the cost. We have had a couple of people come and say what they doing for, but when you call around to like down in Colorado, around Weld County and that, that doesn't even touch it. They're talking six, seven dollars a square foot down there to put in home system fire suppression systems. And I don't know what's different about, you know, the Rocky Mountain region down there versus up here, but if you're talking about a 2,400 square foot home, you can get into a lot of dollars. And that's what scares us as a council. We don't want to put undue burden on a homeowner that's building a new home, that's gonna build a $200,000 home, then gonna have to put in a $25,000 fire system on top of it. I guess the guarantee comes in. Where do we get the guarantee that we're gonna be all, those guys will come up at that time and put in a system for a dollar fifty-one a square foot? And that's the thing that I think we're all worried about.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I can appreciate your concept on this and maybe try to address a couple of issues. One, look at the front range and they rate that they're building homes down there. They can't build them fast enough. So it's probably getting contractors to do it and driven the market price up because that's what we can charge down here because we're building two, 300 homes at a whack. Where up here in Wyoming, when's the last time that we built that many homes at one time? We're talking 10, 12 maybe in a subdivision at the most, if you're lucky. That could be one reason why the price differential is in Colorado. All I can say is we've had two bona fide Wyoming licensed contractors provide testimony that this is what they can install in this town for. I don't know what else to, how else to answer that question other than on the word of these people that have testified in public and told us what their price is per square foot and their competitors what their price is. There it is. I would like to say, I bet if you asked the Karnes the question, if you would have known when you built your home, if it would have cost you an extra dollar fifty a square foot to probably save you three or $400,000 in the claim and being out of your house for six months, they would probably not even bat an eye and say yes.
I think everybody would do it if that cost was really known for that.
Well, like I said, all I can say is we've had people come to this council chambers that are in the business to install those and tell you what their price is. And at the end of the day, I gotta tell you, my life's worth more than a buck thirty-one, maybe depending on who you ask, but a dollar thirty or a dollar fifty, I can say that I'm probably even worth maybe five bucks a square foot if I was building a new house to build it safe. For I know that when I went to bed at night that I'd probably wake up and be here tomorrow in case there was a fire. Or something simple as a light bulb that failed. Something, not that we were doing anything stupid, a light bulb could have killed those children and thank God for whatever reason, they knew what to do. And I want to applaud our, I think, our efforts for fire prevention and safety, those kids knew what to do. Could have been a fatal fire, could have been a multi-fatal fire. I guess another question you need to ask yourselves, you want to live next, do you want to have your house next door burned down? That's what this is about. And that's what we are charged with as a government, is health and safety of our citizens. It's a health and safety question. It's what it is. We want to make it better. We want to tell citizens when Lou comes in and does his job, yep, your house meets code. Is it safe? I wouldn't live here. Because it can burn down to the ground, it's built to burn because it's missing a key element of the code. I don't want to put Lou in that position, to tell him people, hey, your house is to code, and then it burns down.
Yeah. What, how is this, how is this gonna work for existing homes that are already here?
Just for new?
It does not affect that at all. It only affects people that are gonna build now, after we pass it. Does that sound right?
If, Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Martinez...
This is just a way to explain it to the public when I'm out on the street, they say, well, you just passed something that's gonna cost us X amount of money. And I can say, no, it shouldn't affect you because your house has been here for 20 years.
It will not, Honorable Mayor and Councilmember Martinez, this is for new building construction only.
Unless it catches on fire, does that sound right?
No, no.
And then have to rebuild back to code?
If it was a room and contents and they fixed their room on their 1920s house, no. If they're gonna build a brand new house, brand new foundation, brand new house, all the way to the roof, then they would be required to have a sprinkler system. And not only the open floor plans is causing that, it's lightweight construction, everything else. As in the videos that Chief Rutherford showed you and the last time and the documentation we've shown you, houses, we don't have the time that we used to go into a house. And as being charged with not only the health and safety of the public, it's my job as a city manager to make sure that our employees are safe. And sending people into these things that are built to burn is not safe. And our tactics in the fire department have changed greatly from new construction and the loss of property is higher. I think when you start, you know, you start looking at all the little factors, you know, besides the fact that these folks aren't gonna be in their house for the holidays, we're lucky they're still in the community. A lot of times after a large loss fire like this, if people don't have family or places they can go, they end up leaving the community. Those are jobs and people that are leaving our community for this. It's not something that's purely 100% preventable, not preventable. Risk reduction wise, reducing that, people can be back in their homes. In these rooms, these large fires, this would have been a room and contents fire, the sprinkler had went off, they'd have cleaned up a little water damage, and they would have been back in their homes by now.
So what about somebody, you know, I've seen this around town where people take their existing garage, they build a new garage next to it and they convert that into their living room. Would that fall under new or is that still the old and they wouldn't have to do anything?
No, that's still a little construction.
Little construction.
Just trying to clarify that so that we're all understanding, you know, if there's any impact for current residents whatsoever.
The intent of the code is new construction. We want to draw a line in the sand in Rollins, Wyoming and say, we want all the new homes built from this point on in time to fall under this code. That's what it's about. Doesn't affect anybody that has a current home and there is no desire to make that happen. That's not the intent of the code, the way it's written. It's new construction only.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'd like to point out in those photographs, something that you observed when you saw the side-by-side demonstrations, a hole that burned through the floor of that room wasn't from fallen material that fell down onto the floor and then burned through, it's from the swivel chair, the foam on top, the padding on that chair. And it burned, it turned into a liquid hydrocarbon and ran down to the floor, burned through the floor into the crawl space in the house. What the furnishing, we don't have a chance. We truly don't have a chance of getting on scene unless we just happened to be there, had our hoses hooked up and ready to go to work. We don't have a chance. Sprinkler systems have that chance and they have that advantage of time. We've removed that advantage from homes by the way we've built them and the way we've furnished them. We don't have a chance. We're at this point completely defensive, we're squirting water through the windows, we're protecting the houses on both sides. That's our function now.
I'd add just one other comment. If these things are a bad thing and cost prohibitive and all that, why are they required in schools? You know, we went down to the point of making people safe and we put our kids in schools, schools have sprinkler systems in them. Why? Because they work. We learned lessons from history of killing large amounts of kids in school fires. And somewhere along the line, people like you had to face that issue and say, you know what, we're not gonna do that again. We're not gonna kill a bunch of people in our Lady of Angels school, look it up on the We decided as a society that was unacceptable risk, that can be managed and mitigated for a small amount of money. In this community, a dollar fifty or a dollar thirty-one a square foot on new construction, that's pretty minimal. That's, why would we not do that?
Mr. Mayor, call for the question.
Charlie, would you open online voting, please?
Just remember, we have to vote for the question. Procedure. You just say, I want to vote, you can vote. You say, I call the question, we have to vote for your question and then vote.
I know what the question is.
You said, I call the question. If you made a motion, then we have to have a vote for the question.
I'm not gonna say an argument. I made a motion to adopt the ordinance, code ordinance 15 dash, 15 dash four on first reading.
Right, and then you said, I call the question.
And we were discussing that motion.
When you say, I call the question, that's a vote.
We were talking about the motion, we were discussing the motion, and after the discussion, I can call for the question, which is that motion.
Which calls for a vote for your question.
So basically what you need to do, is I call for the vote. I did. Well, say it's called for the vote, then we don't have to vote on the question. Okay, okay, I'll make a motion that we...
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Where do you?
All right.
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with three yeas.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Now we'll move on down to item D, approving the zoning map amendments.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, as you guys know, we worked on making an interactive zoning map and when we did that, we adjusted the colors a little bit, tried to make it more user friendly. And in doing that, we recognized a couple of locations that seemed a little bit off to us and the boundary lines for the zones weren't very clear, more property was split half and half. So we decided to look at the whole thing and just kind of pick it apart a little bit and make sure that things made sense. In doing so, we found 11 total locations that either the boundary line, it didn't match, so it split a property, I would say is the most common, or it was kind of just in a random spot that didn't make sense. And we took those to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Location eight is not being presented to you guys tonight, that was one that, it's over across from the TA, no, that's gonna be the next one. That property owner did finally get back to us and let us know that they wanted... That property owner did finally get back to us and let us know that they wanted to wait, they're actually in talks trying to figure out how to move forward. And if they need to change it, then they'll, they will go through that process and they understand all of that. So that's been removed, the Planning Commission did not recommend that one to you. The other ten have been recommended to you. The first one is actually a group of properties, and this is the one that is, if you look at location one map, it is over there off of Spruce Street behind kind of the main area. This is the zoning location that Mr. Wilson referenced when he addressed you guys at the public hearing, that he has concerns with. But there is a group of parcels there, it is currently zone residential seven point five, we're proposing to change it to commercial two. The second amendment is, it's actually the, it's Stinker Stores now, but the Casper property up behind Sixteenth, he's got that bulk plant area there. That property was half industrial and then half residential seven point five, and we're just trying to make the whole thing industrial and to match the use, which again, you'll see across the board. The third one is thirteen oh seven West Spruce, and this one, there, it's, again, had a couple lots that were zoned commercial, and then a couple that were residential, we're just trying to make it all match. Same thing with the next location four, just reversed. On south side, where the old school used to be, just north of there, or south of there, I'm sorry, there's a property that's half residential seven point five and then half residential mobile home. We're proposing to change that to all mobile home and make, again, the whole property. And then across the street, there's those apartments there. There's a little square section that's partially over the apartments that is zoned residential seven point five that we want to make multifamily to match the apartments that are already there. And then the last one is, I'm lying to you, there's two more. There's one over off of Edinburgh, that is currently residential townhome that we're proposing to make commercial one. And then the last one is actually city-owned property, it's where our, by the rec center across where the baseball fields are. It's zoned residential multifamily, and we're just proposing to change it to residential agricultural. There are maps attached, so you guys can easily, probably better than the location, see exactly what is zoned now and then what's being proposed. All of the property owners for each property were notified, as well as all property owners within three hundred feet of each of those properties. We did, the only comments that we did receive back were on the first location from Mr. Wilson. And I did not bring that letter because I knew he'd be here, and he did talk to the Planning Commission as well. But if you guys have any questions, otherwise, I would be more than happy.
Can we get a motion on this floor? Councilman Singer?
I move to approve all ten zoning map amendments as presented.
Second. First and second. I guess I'd like to start out with, I guess in the future, I don't, I would rather not see so many zoning changes come up under one, one motion here, because if we have an issue with one, then theoretically, we'd vote them all down because of one. And I don't know if that's really fair to kind of lump it all together there, because there's several here that, obviously, I don't have no problems with, but I do have some, some concerns and with the first one, with the Wilsons, that I think we need to discuss and look into a little bit more. So I guess that's where I'm at with that.
I was going to ask, which loca, I'm sorry, which location was?
It's the first location, so, yes, on your, for your map, you're going to look at location one, and then it's that first description. Like I said, there's, it's kind of large because there's numerous properties included in that one. And it's all, all of that is currently residential seven point five, and we're proposing it to go to commercial two.
My, I, I knew this a long time ago, that we were talking that, but they didn't do commercial. I guess my question is, did you have any, anybody challenge that at all?
No, the only comments we received back were from Mr. Wilson.
Okay.
And he is within three hundred feet of that.
Yeah, I, I thought it was a good idea myself, I used to have tack and bill back there, a bunch of houses and years ago, and I think making it commercial would be the way to go on that.
And we have been talking to Richard, and a lot of his concerns have been things that I think, regardless of the zoning, we can address, that they can't just have things running out into his property and.
Well, I mean, for clarification here, I'm a property owner right next to this, and I was never notified and asked anything about a zone change there, so.
I have a list with you listed on it, and I did all those letters.
I never received a letter.
And I didn't get it returned, so I don't know.
Yes, for clarification, you know, so.
Okay.
I guess one of the other things, Honorable Mayor and Council, was when they took these to the Planning Commission, it was to upgrade our zoning map, so it wasn't just like a property owner came in, wanted to do one property at a time. So they ran through the Planning Commission as a total package and going through there. This body has the, the ability to separate these out and vote on them one at a time if you would like, or to, to do whatever. So it's not just necessarily all ten at one, you do have that opportunity to pull those out and do that, for sure. As we said, we can provide the documentation on what we've done. And I do apologize if you did not get notification, I don't know when this process all started.
Danny, I could tell you when this all started.
Well, I guess my recommendation would be up to the people that made the motion, be to remove item number one from the list and move forward with the rest of them. That'd be up to people that made the motions. If not, then we move forward as the motion stands.
We have two more reading.
No.
Not on this?
No, we're done, we're done with this.
Yep.
My question is to make sure that Mr. Wilson's problem is taken care of.
That's what he's saying, is to keep it separate.
I know what he's saying, I know what he's saying. Then you said we could do all this without, without just changing it all, he said that.
Right, well, yeah, we'd have to change the motion from it all and make the motion removing item number one, if we wanted to look at that individually, or any of them individually, for that matter.
They might have questions on the other ones, too.
Well, and that's.
You have the motion, I mean, the second.
I'll make the motion to remove that.
I'll second.
Okay.
Do we just want to do two weeks and look over these, or, because I don't know, I think most of these properties, I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, I think with, with the new motion, we had approved two through.
Well, because you said you, you were concerned about one, right? Or is it just?
No, I was concerned that he's getting his problem addressed, and I had a, I thought I had an answer for it, but maybe they have a better answer than mine. I just wanted to make sure that we just don't throw him off, off someplace like.
So we're remitting the motion to?
No, I just withdrew it, you can, you can make a new one.
Okay.
So you can make, you can make the motion to, two through whatever.
What's the matter? I will move to approve zoning locations two through eleven, or just eleven, is that correct?
Correct, eight was removed as well, though.
Okay, and with, with the exception of eight.
But that's not even, I didn't even, I just, yeah. So.
So two to eleven without the number eight.
And I'll second that, I agree with that.
Any other questions in regards to that? Chair, open online voting, Cherry?
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with five yeas.
Okay. Now with the one that we left out of this, do we need to make a motion or anything to like bring that to a workshop for just some discussion to see if there's anything there that we can do to help out the adjacent property owner, or if there is any actual issues there? I just want time to, so we can review it all and understand concerns.
I, I guess, Honorable Mayor and Council, I'd be willing to staff that we could get with Mr. Wilson and see if we can come up with some sort of alternatives, or look at what we can do, short of stepping up enforcement in, in, in the commercial zone, once it becomes commercial. But we can sit down and absolutely talk with Mr. Wilson and see what we can.
Okay.
If there's anything we can come up, I, I just don't know that we'd have a whole lot of answers in a work session at this time.
Right.
But I think if staff wants to work with Rich first, and then whatever comes from that, then we can, I can notify you that, hey, we'd like to bring this into a work session or.
Who's my ideas or?
Bring this item back and.
I, I just want to make sure that we address the concerns that he has.
For Rich, that we could just sit down and have a conversation about.
Yeah, I'm willing to work with the city, we've gone through your code enforcement.
Sure.
And he can't make progress with what you're, I don't know what you're working on.
Maybe we need to give him some better tools then to enforce the issues out there. I think we could just sit down and take a look at it, get all the issues out and see what we can do, is that fair enough?
Like I said, we were just trying to protect our, our property, I think.
And, and we understand that.
I personally do not want to see it zone commercial, because when we bought out there, I bought out there as being residential. I work with heavy equipment, I don't want to smell diesel and all that other crap that's going to be coming in, property owner that bought above me, I'm downwind of it, so here I am, stuck in the middle of industrial. I, we did not buy our property knowing, you know, that it's going to be turned into.
And I, and I understand that, and that's why I'm going to take the extra time to look at that. I also, the person that bought it, too, I don't want to dismiss him either, you know, so let's see what we can, staff will work with you and see what we can do there.
That's why we're trying to find a happy medium to where our property isn't being diminished. But I, I see what's on the other end of town, and I do not want that above me.
Right. Okay, fair enough, thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. Thanks. We'll, we'll, just make a time.
Let me make sure I got your phone number now.
And we'll move on down to a resolution of an NRA Foundation grant application. And that would be, I didn't even know you were still sitting there.
Honorable Mayor and Council, on the lighter side this evening, Recreation Department would like to proceed with the ask of eighty-six thousand dollars from the NRA Foundation. We have a plan, we want to replace the flooring in the bay area, which is the shooting area, which is now carpeted, as well as the office area, with that beautiful poured flooring that we put in the fitness room and the walking track. It's got a cushion, it also reduces the noise in that area, and it is an amazing floor to clean. It has a life expectancy of millions of years, okay? So it, and it's indestructible. We've, we've talked to the guy about the, the casings falling on the floor and the, and the possible burning of that, but that's not going to happen. So in the process of replacing that flooring with this grant money, we would like to replace the shooting bays. When the new system was installed, that we got the money from the last grant we asked for, the bays now set just a little far back from the targeting system. So you have to like reach out, and if you're five foot nothing, you can't reach those. If you're six foot nothing, it's still really hard. So we'd like to be able to move those bays up, as well as those little monitor things that were planted on those bays. They're not in the right spots because the bays weren't made for those. So those are kind of in a temporary position. We also want to make this a little more youth-sized and a little more ADA accessible. So this will probably help us with that. In replacing both the bays and the flooring, it'll cost eighty-six thousand dollars. Now, this facility, as you all know, is used by miscellaneous law enforcement, a lot of youth are in there, and of course, it's open to the public for shooting. So we want to make this as comfortable as it could possibly be. Right now, the flooring in the shooting area is fifteen years old, in the, in the service area, it is thirty-two years old, and those bays are thirty-two years old. So it's time to do some updating, and this is the way we can do it. The foundation money comes from funds that are raised right here in Wyoming. So we get our share of Wyoming funding, because we are the tenth largest banquet in the nation. We can possibly get this total funding. If not, we have plans to skinny down the floor and move the bays a little bit. But we're really hoping that since we haven't asked for any money for quite some time, that we'd like to move forward with this grant. And the NRA Foundation has very, very, been very generous in funding the expansion of this range, all the way from the thousand-yard target system, which has brought in five, six, seven different shooting things a year now, with guests from everywhere, and with the pouring of concrete and the, like I said, the automatic target system replacement, they have been very, very backing us on everything that we do. So we'd like to move forward with this grant with your blessing.
Okay.
Any questions?
Councilman Gers.
I move to approve a resolution authorizing submission for an NRA Foundation grant application for resurfacing the floor in the shooting area and the meeting area and replacing the shooting bays in the indoor range in the amount of eighty-six thousand dollars.
Second. We have a first and a second, any questions? That's my thing.
My question is on the grant, it's not a matching untapped.
Absolutely not, they sent us the check.
Okay.
I know, right?
Any other questions? If not, Cherry, would you open online voting, please? Cherry was quick on that one.
Online voting is closed, and the motion carries with five yeas.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And we'll move on down to a resolution amending purchasing policy.
Honorable Mayor and Council, before you as a resolution, that is an effort to make a couple changes to our current purchasing policy. What we have here is an update to get us a little more modern in our financial policies. We would like to adjust the thresholds for the classification of fixed assets from a thousand dollars to fifty thousand for infrastructure costs and ten thousand for vehicles, equipment, and other. What that will do is eliminate a significant amount of tedious work from my staff. There are some computers you buy now that are over a thousand dollars. Those are not fixed assets. They don't need to be classified and depreciated, so we have to go through all of those items. So what this will allow us to do is get us into the modern era of what current costs are on various items, and make sure we're classifying fixed assets properly, instead of classifying pretty much everything we buy. The second item is during the course of the audit, maintenance items that we hold mainly in water and sewer, which would include elbows, pipe, all these things that we use throughout the course of business, be held as expense items and not inventory items. I did speak with our auditors about this issue, and the quantities we hold are immaterial to our overall budget. Maybe ten, fifteen thousand dollars in a thirty-six million dollar budget, they are not significant enough to be classified as an inventory item. So making these two changes will get us up to speed on a couple items from our financial standpoint and audit standpoint. Questions?
Any other motion on the floor? Councilman Singer?
I move to approve the resolution amending the city of Rollins purchasing policy as presented.
We have a first and a second. Okay, my first question, Justin, is why do we need to go from a thousand all the way to fifty thousand?
Go from that block to that block on a street, how much is it going to cost? That's a hundred feet, you're looking at over fifty thousand. When you talk water and sewer lines, and that's infrastructure, sewer lines, streets, items like that. The second you break the ground on a water line, you're over fifty thousand. It is a number that is going to keep us from opening a small patch on this street and repatching it from being a fixed item. If I cut a five by five patch here, it's going to be under fifty thousand, but is that truly a fixed asset? Now, if we go from the bridge up to Spruce, it's going to be over fifty thousand, but that is a cap. That's what we would consider a fixed asset item. And that's, that's a threshold that comes from my past, from past auditors. Our auditors are comfortable with that number because of the cost of doing business in the infrastructure world.
Does it strictly mean for fixed assets, not for like purchases of...
No.
Items and stuff like that?
This is a classification within our accounting system. So whenever we do, for example, the purchase of a fire truck, it's a million dollars. That million dollars goes on our books as a fixed asset and it is depreciated over an appropriate number of years. That is all recorded within our accounting system and our audit. This does not change the thresholds for bids or anything like that. This is strictly a classification only and what's classified is a depreciable item.
Any other questions for Dustin?
No, I think this is eliminating a lot of tedious number crunching and just paperwork. If I'm understanding correctly.
Yes, it is essentially.
In other words, you're inventorying all these little pieces and parts for a water line. Do we really need inventory to just know that we have that kind of...
We're, we're essentially expensing the tedious items. Now...
Because we know we're going to have them. We know we need them.
We do and we keep some on hand, but the amount of money invested in those items is so immaterial to the overall scope, it's not worth keeping. It's not worth the extra effort. Now, speaking with the water department, they're going to still inventory those so they know when to reorder. But from an accounting and audit standpoint, it is no longer required.
Okay.
So...
Sherry, would you open online voting please?
Online voting is closed and the motion carries with five yeas.
Thank you, Dustin. I will move on to item G to approve the purchase of a used rotary snow blower.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I think I'm going to punt on this one. November first, we asked for an interpretation of the statute on whether it applied to a used piece of equipment. And why we asked that question was it's extremely difficult to write a bid spec for a used piece of equipment on hours and be totally fair and impartial about that when you're not trying to go out and purchase a piece of equipment that somebody has. And, and so if you'll indulge me for a little bit before you would make a motion, because I don't know that that's the course of action we want to take tonight. So I'm going to break this into two parts. Why we want a rotary snow blower and then why we had the motion the way it was and where we go from there. So rotary snow blower, if you don't know what it is, what we're looking at is a unit that would go on the front of a front-end loader. And it's like a big snow blower. It's the simplest way I can tell you. And, and I'm going to give up on the pin there. And so one of the things that I've observed that I think is a huge safety issue for the public and for our employees is we do a lot of backing into traffic with a loader and back and forth removing these piles from the center median. Not only is it hard on our equipment and our loaders, it's very unsafe. I mean, people don't yield to emergency vehicles. They're not going to yield to a loader. And, and I got to tell you, even the most experienced operator of a dump truck and a loader, after you've been in that thing for six hours doing the same thing all day, you kind of look over your shoulder in that blind spot, but do you truly see it? And we've been very fortunate, you know, knock on wood, that we've had very minimal occurrences. So the idea was we, I talked to the street supervisor and I said, hey, you know, go out and see what some other people are doing. I know Cheyenne has some of them. I know Evanston does. I believe the city of Lander does. And a lot of people use these to some great success. So we got to looking around. A new one is around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And so I was like, you know, we want to see if something works in Rawlins before we put that kind of an investment in. So I asked them to start looking for some used ones and we found a used one with some low, extremely low hours on it for seventy-nine thousand and five hundred dollars. It was from a municipality that decided that it wasn't working out real well, that it's through a third-party broker or a dealer to sell it and we were looking at it. And so then the question come up that I had asked Attorney Bach. I just asked her, I said, does this used piece of equipment, how, how does this statute read and is this something that we can do without having to go out to bid this? Because again, like I said at the beginning, it, it, it seems like we're just forced to develop some used equipment spec that we're pretty much trying to get one piece of equipment that's available. And I just don't know how you write a used spec because it's so variable on these types of equipment. And so we asked the opinion if Section fifteen-one-one-one-three, it says all contracts or any type of public improvement excluding contracts for professional services or the primary purpose is emergency work or maintenance, so that would be excluded from the process. So my question to, to her was how, does this even apply? Does this fit in with there? Unfortunately, Ms. Bach's been battling an illness and she'd sent this interpretation out to WELG through Wyoming, through some of the other attorneys. And at four oh two today, I got a word back that we're, we're just really not on very firm ground to do that, under that process. So I, one of the options to get this a piece of equipment was also a lease from the broker. So I'd asked Ms. Bach when we were downstairs, if, if a lease on a used piece of equipment would, would fit the deficit, you know, if we would have to go through this process, it's not a new piece of equipment and we could enter into a lease for that piece of equipment. And I guess if she, are you still comfortable with that as a lease, Amy? I don't want to speak for you. I know you're having a hard time, so.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, Wyoming Statute fifteen-one-one-one-three does not specifically reference leases of equipment. It specifically references all purchases and leases of vehicles, trucks, cars, automobiles, those types of things. The council, previous councils in the past have approved lease agreements for the purchase of equipment. So that's not clearly exempted from that, so.
So would it be, I guess, a recommendation that we just try to lease it then or...
My recommendation would be for this council not to take action on the agenda item.
Fair enough. So then I guess, do we need a motion to...
It can die if we're not having a motion or a second.
Anybody like to make a motion? No motion has been made, so this item will die.
I'm sorry, I have to have a follow-up question. Is that alright? So you are comfortable with the lease though? I mean, that, we're legally okay to go that forward that way?
As long as the budget has been appropriated and the amounts are available, you can move forward. The city can move forward with the lease agreement.
Is that, would that work? I mean, is that an option to look at and see if that would... Because I agree with you, man. Some, I mean, this front-end loader thing is horrible. Like, I agree with you. Anything would be better. And I guess the other, the other machine is what, it just doesn't work well when it gets too wet or something or too heavy?
Well, the Pac-Man machine has some limitations. When they, when, when they bought that machine, it's actually an all materials handling machine. It wasn't really designed for snow specifically. While it works okay, it has some logistical issues of traversing deep snow. If you looked at the way it's set up to drive, it doesn't do real well in deep snow. And then when we start to get the wet springtime or even the, the early snows that we had here a few weeks ago, when it starts to pack down, this thing really will not take that lower layer, layer off as well. It's just not...
Yeah, it's not really a snow machine.
It's really not. I mean, it, it works, it works okay, but you know, that's why, the nice thing about this blower is the Pac-Man has no ability to blow the snow. It, it just picks it up onto a conveyor belt and takes it. Where on these snow blowers, the rotary chops it up into smaller, smaller pieces and there's a large fan mechanism in there that will blow the snow. So where this not only can improve the safety of our employees and the time to it, there's certain areas in town where we wouldn't even have to pick, we wouldn't have to windrow the snow at all. Like Harshman Street. We have a lot of problems up there on Harshman Street, you know, since we put that new street in with drifting. We have the sports complexes all out over there. We could just go through there in a couple passes with this rotary and blow the snow over on the sports complex and not even have to windrow it. Certain parts of East Cedar and some of the other areas in town that, that there's open areas and open fields where we don't have to windrow this, we can just blow it off to the side of the road and not even have to come back and pick it up.
So is this going to have a horseshoe chute that it could go into a truck that could clean off Cedar?
Yeah, it can go into the, it can, yeah, it can go into the truck or, or you can launch it out into open spaces. So that's some of the variable things, you know, even along Third Street by the cemetery.
Is there any reason we would not say to get more information on the lease?
I, I have information on the lease, but in fairness, because it wasn't presented that way, I would...
Just let it die and he'll bring it back.
In good faith, I'll bring back the budget numbers and the lease and...
I seen it work before. I seen Lander's work and they're, they're quick.
It's phenomenal. Absolutely.
The truck is running next to it and it blows the...
Couple hours and this is all clean and the road's open and it's great.
Thirty thousand tons in an hour of snow you can move with that snow.
So it's something that...
Sure.
And safety.
We want to work smarter, not harder. And, and so this is one of the things happening is that we've looked at. Again, I, you know, I, there's no doubt in my mind that it's going to work better. But for the opportunity to pick up a machine that's of this caliber for the price, to reassure us that it's going to work and then as we move forward, if this is the new way we're going to do things, we can bid out a couple of new ones in the future. So I will bring this back to you in a lease format with, with the budget allocation and things like that at the next meeting.
Okay.
If that's okay. Okay. Thank you very much, Counsel.
And we'll move on down to item H, the offer to purchase City of Rawlins' property.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, again, this is just, I need some direction from this body. I understand that, you know, this, this piece of property was not for sale. So we weren't actively advertising this piece of property. A citizen just had submitted a written offer to purchase a couple lots. I understand, I think you were provided with the statutory process for disposing of city property. What I, what I'm just asking is that you would take action to formally reject this offer so I can tell this individual, hey, we, we can't do it this way. And then I'd also seek for some direction on this whole area. It was the previous council's desire and what I'm talking about is this whole analog flat area which was subdivided by the city and I'll pass it, I'll leave this city even with that area I just described. This is the area that comes off of Airport Road that would be on the north side and the south side of Rochelle Ranch Drive going to the golf course. It also encompasses some lots that are off Cloverleaf Avenue, which is the next block to the north over there. The city went in in a hopes for some development under past administration and they developed, or they plotted, excuse me, they didn't develop. They plotted twenty-eight lots in this area there. The, the lots in question that the people made the offer on face the Cloverleaf side, so these aren't even facing the golf course side. They were interested in purchasing those for some sort of development. At the time that this was developed, the previous council gave permissions to staff that they just wanted to entertain selling it all or nothing. And, and I think if, some of you may remember, we had a large motel chain wanting to buy the first couple lots coming down the Airport Road and that's where the decision was made. Now, we'd rather sell the whole, the whole development to somebody. I, I will just say that, you know, we are paying taxes, property taxes on those, since we've plotted those to the county assessor's office. We pay, I didn't bring the thing, it's close to eight thousand dollars a year, I believe, is what we pay for those lots since we developed them or plotted them. I keep wanting to use the word developed. There's nothing down there. When we plotted those, so, you know, they're on the county tax roll, but it is costing us money just to sit down there on those lots. And I guess I would be entertaining some direction and I can bring that back in the future of what you guys would like to do with that. Have us list the properties, sell them at public auction, do whatever your options are in state statute. But just so we have some, when people are interested in these properties, staff can tell them, no, we're not interested in selling individuals. We would sell all of them or whatever the case may be. So I'm looking for some direction from, from this body on what to tell people.
I feel that obviously, we obviously will not entertain an offer that was made on it, but I feel that we shouldn't move forward on getting assessed property value of them and advertising them and selling them individually. I mean, if we can sell some, we should sell some instead of trying to hold on to sell the whole thing.
Do we know why the previous council wanted to do it as...
Honorable Mayor, Councilman Wells, I, I believe that it was just the idea that, so they'd have some like development. I, I think some of the comments, if I remember right, were in the road, especially along the road going to the golf course, I think there was a desire to see some sort of organized development or, you know, some sort of business development that kind of looked like you were going somewhere. I, I think the other, the other thing that they were not wanting was kind of a hodgepodge of, of, you know, here's, here's somebody's private garage of stuff and then here might be a business and then there might be a salvage yard. I, I think that's what they were trying to avoid along that corridor. If I, that was some of the conversation that was, that was had going there.
Because if it went as a whole development, it would develop as a area.
Motel, a big business or what have you, but...
Right.
Obviously, nothing's really come about. I mean, I feel, I feel that we should move forward on getting some appraised values and... We're not going to do nothing with it.
I mean, it was one of those things is that I, I think that they were hoping, and I can only speak for the past people that have done that. I think there's somewhere along their, their thought process, I don't think it was ill-fated, but I, I think that the, the cart got out in front of the horse a little bit on that thing when they, when they went ahead and plotted that and didn't have a developer in mind to do anything with it. It does have, the way it's plotted does have some logistical challenges with some of the drainage down there, especially along the, the south side and, and, and the north side when there's a large drainage that crosses over there. So it does have some logistical challenges to look at. I, I guess maybe we don't need to make a decision tonight on the future of those properties because I think that we could sit down and maybe brainstorm which ones might be marketable. I think the ones on the Cloverleaf side may be marketable and, and then maybe we want to try to package something along the Rochelle Ranch Drive and, and do something. But we could bring this back in a work session and then maybe get some direction.
Those animals, they're right there along that road.
The Port Road?
On your way out to the golf course, there's you...
Oh, where the, where the steers are?
Yeah.
No. So when you look at that map on the south side, I don't know what the last lot is, Jackie. But that's another property owner that owns that and I believe they own from there right down just short of where the golf course fence, there's that other fence on the golf course there. And then YDOT has a piece of property on the back side and then past ours on the other side, I think is some Anne Sheath's property and there's kind of a, it's Simms' property and there's another property on there and I can't remember the name, I'm sorry.
So is that city property where those steers are?
No. No, that's a, I, I believe the lady that owns that is, she used to be out of California, but I haven't had any contact with her for years.
This is the property synergy turn right there, the golf course road that's hardly between, to the north of Airport Road, between the car wash, that little spot up to there.
Pretty much both sides of the road down, the left side goes further down, the right side's docked short of where those steers are down there that you're talking about.
You have what you need from us then, Scott? Need to do another motion?
You know, I, I would...
You know, I would just appreciate a motion to formally reject that offer on those two. Do you want, I mean, I have the lots if we want to do that, or do you want to?
I just kind of want, I don't need to know the lots.
Yeah, I don't think we need to know the lots.
Okay.
If we can get a motion, Councilman Durst?
I move to formally reject the offer to purchase City of Rawlins' own property.
Give me a second. First and second. Do we have any discussion? If not, Sherry, would you open online voting?
You hit me.
Thank you.
Well, at least get started in another direction.
Yeah, at least I have something to tell those folks. It's been a little while. I just feel remiss in not being able to give them a straight answer.
Right.
And then we can move forward on how we want to go in the future. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Scott.
So Councilmember Durst said who?
Councilman Singer?
Councilmember Durst?
Yes.
Councilman, Vice Mayor Singer?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Councilmember Wells? Martinez?
Yes.
The motion carries with five years.
Okay. If there's nothing else to come before the council, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.